The call meeting back in position. We're gonna make the vote, votes should go into, uh, the public speaking portion of the meeting. Second motion, the public portion of the meeting, I mean, sorry, the public comment portion of the meeting. Motion seconded by Bishop Pampel. Hold on.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez. Nasco. Padilla. Ferrer. Yes. Trheo.
Yes!
Montero.
Yes.
At this time, the microphones are open for public comments. Those who have signed in prior to this session, I shall call individuals from the microphone based on the order of assignment. Each statement made by an participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question one member's individuality. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No holder or indecent violation. A person may address the board no more than once during the single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Any comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the Board of Education and not a meeting of the public. Our first speaker is Maria Escher Maria. Good evening, Maria.
Good evening, I'm Maria. My name is Maria, that's Maria, but I come through the world to ask about each activity to be done. I have been concerned about my son's placement. He started out at school seven times a month. And in three weeks, then, then my son had went to an academy. He is in the state of his free time. He told me he's getting bullied on bus and school, both beyond bus. The bus thing called the cop on my son, but are, but are calling the cop on your kids as well. He, he told me he was put in the party room with his face in the corner and his arm behind his back, like as if he was being wrestled. When my son had the cop fall on him, I asked for him to have a transportation with worse situations. At my son's school, they have to hamper themselves on, but are allowed to keep their DSDs. They walk me to kids down with a metal detector and search their book bags and search their pockets. When I saw schools, they never told me about searching the pockets and walking them down with a metal detector. This school is treated these kids classified angels like criminals. But according to the paperwork our state Department of District, approved in-state art schools for students with disabilities, this school and my son's last school, they are not schools for autism. I want my son to have a new case manager. I put this district set up my son to be abused and set me up as well. For I'm the parent that won't allow this, I would like a meeting with all of you and Dorothy McMullin. I received a letter from Valerie Dunn and she worded things the way it didn't happen. I want Valerie Dunn to have more than put in my kids' ID. I would also like her case manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie Dunn. Our next speaker is Jose Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
First of all, I just want to congratulate the students, teachers, supervisors on performance and their achievements.
Thank you.
Uh, well, let's compare, you know, that I've come to the Board of Education meetings, we do about different issues and, uh, different things. And do a question, I'm passionate about social education and graduation rates. A few weeks ago, a senior student came on to report showing that four out of about six high schools are in a list of the, of the lowest graduation rates in the state. Uh, now, this is now for multiple years, but four of these high schools, four of those high schools have shown up at the bottom of, uh, of this list in terms of the lowest graduation rates in the state of New Jersey. Uh, so again, it's something that needs to be done about. I understand, you know, there's a lot of anti-reverent, reverent speeches, and I know officials are doing very well of issues. And some of these issues need more attention. And I know, we have no wonder for the school district, a lot of money is spent on exposures with someone who's local, but we'll look at more students than police. And police is also a student issue. So it's something that I think was very dear to me, and I hope that, you know, even, uh, perhaps me, who saw things with some more effort, some more, whatever it takes, I mean, investigative investigation with bigger professionals, you know, what you're doing. Uh, so, uh, in those four out of the six high schools, seventy percent of students in high school attend those four high schools. I mean, about seven out of every ten students attend the school that is on the list that show the lowest graduation. So it's something, you know, that needs to be done, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Our next, uh, final speaker is Ian Farabaugh.
Also, I'm here. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to thank you very much, um, coming from Josephine's School Number Four. Uh, thank you very much for the teachers, for the grad rating. I know we're texting the board members and running them crazy, but, uh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, my employer actually don't come to the field or meetings, but I'd say thank you all for the public speaking first, because it's been a fine six, seven, it's four months, a very good time to, to make, uh, my volunteer time. Thank you for that. Uh, our kids have worked on hard for a day to break. Uh, and I just want to let everybody know, Josephine's School Number Four is a public school, it's a academy, it's a decent school, but working hard. Uh, our kids that do need help are being pulled out of the gas, even by the teacher, man, even science. You know, the, the teachers, assistants, our, all the child seventeen, they're working with parents. It's not paraphrasing, but we're working, we're getting there. And, uh, thank you very much from here, going to go next, people to work with the district. I'm sure it's gonna make, it's gonna make a big difference, speaking about special needs and that kids will improve in speech and communication skills. I realize we're pretty good to, you know, this, this is the first year that they have worked on with her, and speaking also like did the system basically. And she's doing pretty good, working there, for the other time, I have to say. Um, I am coming here for the next time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask about this, um, and the new garden and this long legging. I really like for you to think about helping kids through art, like today this, this evening, you know. Think about maybe changing the gym with the music, you know. Um, think about ways of maybe using that hyper kids and doing more, uh, basketball or painting. Something that will keep their mind busy and moving and creative at the same time and learning at the same time. Learning doesn't have to be boring, you know, we, I know so many schools are doing it, and I, I think, I think it is out of our league that's all the year, but thank you very much for the work that is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farabaugh. It's always wonderful to hear, I love you, we come out and certainly point out the faults on the board, but come up with, uh, sometimes solutions and ideas, we do, we're certainly grateful for that. And we want to thank all the, uh, speakers that come out tonight, you know, for their, for their business schedules and time to speak here tonight. Uh, seeing that there are all those speakers, I'm gonna close this portion of the meeting. Are there any comments from the members?
I just have a comment from Mrs. Maria. I did talk with Special Agent Director, and she's handling the case. She's too many know, you're chomping at the district. And the way it works, case managers, they're packaged into different schools. They go and receive interviews, they have, uh, they could take or not take your child. It's under discretion, there is a criteria for each school. If, uh, the child was taken, and they would be, uh, they have the criteria to handle the needs of the child. So I suggest that you go back, you talk to the teachers, talk to the director, talk to the case manager, and try to work this out. Uh, that's the only way, this event has no, uh, law to reflection or any of the private schools. We do pay for them to accompany the child, and it's based on the child's eligibility, and there is IP and related services, they have to be made through the IP, okay, so, if you see her, you know.
I'm here.
Okay, so you know, we told her, I, I hope you follow.
I'll go by my paper now.
Okay, I can show it to you.
Any other donors?
Mr. President, my name is, this is true. I just like to, uh, very good, able to be in staff and administration and school eighteen, you've done a great job here. Um, thank you for writing us, I think this is a, it's, uh, it's a step further, we made a lot of parents and we're able to, uh, participate with a part of the community uh, we may not have otherwise unless we would have came here today. Uh, I know there's been several concerns, as of late, about the, uh, public, uh, speaking, uh, portion and our accessibility, uh, as a board for public. And I like to say that I, I know that Mr. Montero was doing an excellent job at, uh, making sure that we are accessible over the last year or so, with taking these board meetings in several schools, just to, those have access. We've done public forums, or we do Q and A, invite members from the administration. Mr. Powell, who has, uh, has come to a few of those, and we, it's not there. Assistant superintendents and, uh, directors of the different departments are available to answer the questions, and questions that aren't able to answer. At those, uh, particular meetings, are then taken back to the administration and those questions are answered. Uh, we have very intention here to, as the Board of Education, to be accessible to our public. Uh, we are an expansion of our city, we were elected, uh, from, from our community to represent our community, and everyone here, uh, I think takes that very seriously, having a dialogue, uh, whether it be here at the board bed, uh, at these meetings, or on these forums or, the other meetings that people do communicate to us. There is a forum, they don't have it here on hand, but we can have it for you, uh, where we do have someone who takes these calls and you could speak to any one of us, uh, personally, if that's what you wish, or if you want to meet, you could set that up as well. Mr. Gonzalez takes the time, has a schedule, uh, a lot of people one-on-one, I've done that as well. Still have many of the board members here. So accessibility to the public is very important to us, and, uh, we look forward to continuing to do that. I, I can't, I don't know where we'll come next, but I'm sure Mr. Montero will have a, uh, a good place for us to go to continue, you know, to interact with both, as well as several forums, I know they're on the schedule too. So we travel throughout the city, uh, to continue this, this dialogue. So, uh, we welcome your input, uh, we love to hear, uh, your concerns, we want to know if we can do better. We don't mind hearing, um, you know, what we lack, what we know, uh, we're not perfect. Uh, but we are, we're a school district in the state of New Jersey, and that's, that's a big accomplishment that we're proud of. And that's, that goes to all the hard work this administration does, and children, the children really take a lot of pride back, so. Uh, although we all sit up here and, and pat ourselves on the back about the bad things that are going on, we, we're aware of it, but we have to celebrate the good things. It is important to celebrate the good things. Anytime we achieve, and our kids are starting to excel, and it's every day, we have to recognize that. That we, we are that voice, we're the voice of those children, and we have to give them an opportunity. When members of the community are doing a great job, we have to acknowledge that, that, that cannot be ignored, and it will come to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. But I also want to thank School Eighteen once again for allowing us to be here tonight. And I also want to recognize and thank, and shout out to, uh, to those who helped us yesterday. We came into School Eighteen to film our second show with the Board of Education, which will, uh, we start airing in, uh, next week, if I'm not mistaken. And what we're trying to do with schools, uh, in this School's Board of Education show, is to go into the schools and showcase them. Many people drive by these, these wonderful buildings, a lot of exciting things are happening here in our school district. We, we didn't become a whole different school district alone. It took a lot of work and a lot of help from a lot of people. The staff, the parents, the students, and we have a long way to go. So now with the show, we're trying to bring the community into the schools, expose them to what's going on here. Uh, it's a lot of work, I spent the entire day with the brave group, Alan Fosch, and a shout out to Heather Goulding, and to Amanda Ronan, and the students from the Johnson Arts Academy, who helped film and produce the show. This is gonna start this year, next, uh, next week, I believe. I want to thank School Eighteen for allowing us to come in and sort of disrupt them, disrupt their flow yesterday. But I think it's gonna be wrong for it, that the community out there sees all the exciting things that are taking place in our school district. Miss Kennedy, uh, lead us through the agenda.
Thank you. Got approval for minutes from the board meetings on February twenty-first and March sixth.
Approval minutes. motion by Mr. Cruz, seconded by, we did listen to Ferrer, professional comments, she is on local.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sentence of the secretary's report for the month of January.
So the report, second. Moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Ferrer, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Two A personnel report.
Move the report. Moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by, for her, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco. Padilla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes, but with attention on page twenty-eight and thirty-seven.
Trheo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Three tuition report.
Underword, second. Moved by Commissioner Pappas, seconded by Commissioner Cruz, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Four A considerations. Four considerations.
Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Pappas, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Montero. Four D, use of facilities.
Second, move four B, bring your all feet. Moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Pappas, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Montero. Four D, use of facilities with feet.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Ferrer, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Four C, future.
Move the report, second. Moved by Commissioner Ferrer, seconded by Commissioner Trheo, any questions or comments? She is on local.
Battle. Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trheo.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Mr. President, members of the board, my first report tonight, uh, is entitled, "Two Thousand Twelve progress targets and annual measurable objectives." Uh, the presentation, conducted by Daniel Gil, the Grantford Research and Evaluation Assessment.
Good evening. I apologize for my lack, so, so. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about some changes to accountability in our schools and districts. Under the federal legislation, no child left behind. Our schools and districts were judged on whether the mean actuarially progress, affectionately known as AYP. Last year, the New Jersey Department of Education applied to the U.S. Department of Education for a flexibility waiver under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The application was approved, and AYP has been replaced by annual measurable outcomes, or AMLs. Some of the aspects of the accountability system have remained. We are still judged on our performance of our total population, although this is now called school-wide. We are judged on the performance of our general education and special education students, as well as the performance of our English language learners. Our different ethnic groups are also included, as well as our economically disadvantaged students, those qualified for free and reduced price deals. Each of the aforementioned groups must have a ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent participation rate, and each must meet predetermined performance targets. Each room only counts if there are at least forty students for participation, and at least thirty students for academic performance. Students are still included if they arrive on or after July first. You are probably wondering what has changed if all of these things have remained the same. Under AYP, the student data were recorded in grade stands, elementary, middle, and high. Now, all grade stands in the school are included together. Under AYP, all subgroups were expected to reach one hundred percent proficiency, which is statistically impossible. And now, the ultimate goal is ninety percent proficiency, but each subgroup has its own predetermined target. With AYP, there were predetermined statewide benchmarks, and now there are only school-specific benchmarks. State number has been eliminated, and schools in need of improvement and districts in need of improvement have been replaced with reward, focus, and priority designations. Here's a little more about the new annual measurable outcomes. The AMLs are equal increments determined to cut the percent of partially proficient students with your, uh, total students and any subgroup in half by the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen state assessments. As mentioned previously, the ultimate goal is to reach ninety percent proficiency school-wide within each other, or to cut the percent of partially proficient students in half. Here's an example. Baseline data used are from the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year. If the baseline proficiency was sixty percent, that means that forty percent were partially proficient. By two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, that forty needs to be cut in half, which is twenty. Having six years to accomplish that, the equal increments would be three point three percentage points per year. So increasing by three point three points each year, the final target would be seventy-nine point eight percent proficiency for a subgroup for its total population that started out with a baseline of sixty percent. You can see the equal increments here. Of course, there are schools that are already near the ultimate goal of ninety percent. So here's an example of a school whose baseline data is eighty-six percent proficient. That means fourteen percent were partially proficient in the baseline year. Half of fourteen is seven, and seven divided by the six years is one point two percentage points per year. Since the targets exceed ninety percent in the last three years, the target gets set at ninety percent. Here's an example of one of our schools. I apologize, I'm sorry to see for those of you looking at the screen. The baseline information is provided. You will see that all subgroups have a minimum of thirty students. The other groups that have no data on them just have a dash, that indicates that there were less than thirty students. These are the targets for each of the populations for last year, this year, and the next four years. Each year, the school's performance will be compared to these targets. We are going to look at a performance report for one of our schools, but first I want to explain a confidence interval to you. The confidence interval is a statistical method applied to minimize the risk of falsely identifying any marginal subgroup as if not needing the progress target. What does this mean? This means that the larger the group, the more This means that the larger the group, the more accurate the data reporting. Each student in a large group has a smaller direct impact. The smaller the group, the larger the individual impact. For example, if you take a test with one hundred questions and you get one wrong, your score is ninety-nine or ninety-nine percent. If you take a test with only ten questions and you get one wrong, your score is ninety or ninety percent. Each individual question has a much greater impact because there are so few. This quantitative confidence interval is informed by that supplied so we can say with ninety-five percent confidence that the performance of that subgroup is accurate. Let's take a look. First, you will notice three colors in this report and four colors in the footnote area. The left side of the report with the yellow header is the participation rate, and the right side with the green header is the academic performance. Green boxes with "yes" written in them mean the target was met. Yellow boxes with "yes" and an asterisk mean the target was met but only after the confidence interval was applied. Red boxes mean the target was missed. And the blue box in the footer means that ninety percent target has already been reached. While this sample report does not have any of the boxes, we do have schools in the district who do have blue boxes on their charts. In addition to the colored wording, this report also shows the number of enrolled students and the percent that were not tested for the participation rate, as well as the number of valid scores, the percent proficient, and the target to which each subgroup was compared for their academic performance. The New Jersey Department of Education has required that all schools that miss any of their performance targets create an action plan. Focus or priority schools are now required to submit these plans because they already have created school improvement plans. So how did our schools do? Schools five, fifteen, and twenty have met less than seventy percent of their targets. Schools meeting seventy percent or more of their targets are Edison, School Four, and School Two. Schools meeting at least eighty percent of their targets, School Thirty, School Twenty-three, Schools Three and Twenty-seven, and School Twenty-five. Schools meeting ninety percent or more of their targets, meeting ninety-four percent of their targets are School Sixteen, Dwyer, and Fawcett. And schools meeting ninety-five percent of their targets are School Six, School Twelve, School Nineteen, and School Twenty-nine. We have twelve schools who have met one hundred percent of their targets. School One, School Seven, School Thirteen, School Forty, School Eighteen, School Twenty-one, School Twenty-two, School Twenty-six, School Twenty-eight, Elizabeth High School, Hamilton, and Jack O'Shea. This concludes my presentation on AMLs. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a second report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Gill. Second report is the XMS News. As you saw earlier tonight, twelve schools from Tennessee, Rhode Island, School Number Seven, were invited to appear on the Dr. Haath Show with First Lady Michelle Bubba to demonstrate a jamming minute session they do in schools to keep active. The school which achieved the alliance for a healthy generation initiative's coveted role status in 2012 was selected for their diligent efforts in health, education, and participation in extensive wellness activities. Throughout the Elizabeth College Schools, you can see people wearing red and white striped hats, assigned to Dr. Seuss and the Read Across America activities by a full force. Students from March first through March eighth participated in a district-wide effort to recognize Read Across America Week and the birthday of March second of the most celebrated children's author from the United States, Dr. Seuss. Some of our guest speakers were the board president of Montero, board members Paul Muret, Anthony Pannell, Francisco Gonzalez, Charlie Batlas, and Jonathan Nelson. Students Jose Alivin, Alujo, Nelson Marquez, Captain Rivera, along with Hamilton mathematics coach Harry Alada, and teacher Oliva Zigal spent part of March weekend competing in a nationwide mathematics competition entitled Moody's Lego Math Challenge. These students downloaded a problem which they had four hours to solve. Ultimately, they uploaded the solution to a panel of judges. The best five papers will be chosen, and the team of students who tap those papers will present their work in person. The winners turn up in a way with one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. All participants receive a letter of recognition for their hard work. Mrs. Zigal's president at Hamilton's Abbot Program for reinforcing students' good study habits and encouraging post-secondary education. Tennessee, Rhode Island was awarded a grant from the New Jersey State Council on the arts and arts horizon to work with professional artists in the resident of Mooreham, Oleks, to help design and build the museum here. The Alexander Hamilton Perpetual Academy, Mrs. Ferrer's ninth-grade art class focused on people of all ages and backgrounds who have risked their lives in remote education. Students read the girl who challenged Pakistan. This article from Newsweek was about Alala Yosafzad, a fifteen-year-old girl from Pakistan who was shot by the Taliban. She was targeted, a target of the Taliban, as she was an inspiration and a leader of a movement to promote education for girls. After threats to her life, she was transferred to United Kingdom where she is currently recovering from her injury. After months' discussion about this article, students wrote a letter to Alala that thanked her for her courage in standing up against signals and helping so many girls set the opportunity, set, get the opportunity for education. These letters were mailed to a hospital in England where she has been recovering. The Elizabeth High School forensics team, under the direction of Roger Rodriguez, competed at the 2013 New Jersey Forensics State Championship Tournament at Baston Bridge High School against thirty-four schools and five hundred contestants across the state. The Elizabeth High School team took fifth place in overall speech. Congratulations to quarterfinalists, semifinals, finalists, and state champions as follows. The team of Melanie Ruiz and Adrian Olasko quartered in a novice public forum debate. The team of Francisco Estevas and Yoko Vito were ranked among the top four varsity public forum debate teams in the state. In improvisational acting, Arturo Escheles semifinled with finalists Isaac Jimenez taking third and Aaron Malado taking second. In impromptu speech, finalist Charlie Lauda took fifth place. In dramatic interpretation, finalist Diana Alonso took fifth place. In dual interpretation, finalist David Figueroa and Aaron Malado took third place. In humorous interpretation, Aaron Malado and Isaac Jimenez semifinled with finalists Arturo Escheles became the New Jersey state champion in first place. Arturo Escheles will be recognized later this spring at the annual New Jersey Governors Award in Arts Education and State Capital to receive an award and a scholarship for his accomplishment. The team's debate is preparing for districts that will be on March twenty-second and twenty-third at Summit this week. Both Elizabeth High Schools' upper lower academy jazz band earned superior ratings early this month at the Hamilton West High School Jazz Festival. In addition to the two bands' overall achievements, several of the band members earned individual accolades. Special scores went to outstanding solist Regina Aruresi at piano. Outstanding solist Arthur Hidalgo vined. Outstanding section wore trumpets. Christian Mula, Wyatt Franco, Carmen Moste, Brian Olasko, Eric Bonita. Congratulations to the Elizabeth High School band for earning superior ratings at the Hamilton Jazz Festival Jazz Festival. Robert Morris, School Number Eighteen, participated in the Union County Youth Art Month Art exhibit in Liberty Hall. Over seventy entries come throughout Union County were received, and only six were selected to represent Union County at the State House in Trenton. One of the six artworks selected was for Yolif Rios, an eighth-grade student at School Number Eighteen. Her watercolor landscape painting portraits with gold on sand dunes. Yolif Rios and her art teacher, Miss Jeanette Martinez, attended the opening ceremony at the State House on March first, where Yolif was honored with a certificate presented by the Art Educators of New Jersey. Students from Estelar and Coloco's first grade by liberal class from Winfield Scott's, School Number Two, competed project-based learning project for the second art period. Animals in danger of extinction was the topic given to the students. Even though it was raining outside on February second, nothing is bad in the spirit. It was amazing and influenced as a support for Easttown School Number Three that day. A look at the African influence on music from Arus to Rats was the theme of the assembly, which combined efforts of team members and students produced an honor of African-American history. Students of Mrs. Brooke James Holmwood at Dr. Antonia Batoma, School Number Twenty-seven, celebrated the accomplishments of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Students read books about Dr. King and discussed his powerful inspirational life. An account of Dr. King believed that all people should be treated equally. They concluded the lesson by creating their own portraits of Dr. King and developing their own dreams based on his "I Have a Dream" speech. Ronald Reagan, the cabinet's room of the thirtieth celebration of Black History Month, culminated with a show that paid special tribute to several African-American colleges. Among the colleges honored were Spelman College, Temple University, and Xavier University. Students informed the enthusiastic audience about each university and displayed their talents with performances, including dance, a skit about Eric Tumkin, and a thrilling step routine. The elementary choir and the real ring jazz band performed as well. For the fourth year in a row, Thomas Edison Career Technical Academy competed in the annual New Jersey High School Consumer Bowl at Governor Livingston High School in Berkeley Heights. The New Jersey Division of Consumer Affairs hosted the event in effort to encourage interest in consumer rights. Students committed to a two-month period of preparation for the first of potentially three levels of competition, culminating in a statewide championship. Average students Antonia Maciar, Marie Shawn, Robinson, Gabriela Diaz, Kevin Angulo, and Kevin Paz competed against Lyndon Jonathan Baker and Governor Livingston High School in an annual show format. Knowledge of important current consumer issues were tested. Competition included three rounds of open-ended multiple-choice questions. Thomas Edison Academy dominated round one and eventually took third place in the competition. Students who were led by average teacher Michelle Ramonby enjoyed a certain award ceremony and received certificates of recognition for their efforts. On February first, Joseph Batlas, one of the board's team members, participated in the tenth annual National Wear and泳wear Series. Each year on the first Friday of February, many organizations go to wear it, help raise crucial awareness and significant causes in the fight against heart disease and stroke in women. Thomas Jefferson Academy students Senior Wilson Rios and Senior Joaquin Jones and freshman Gabriela Gomez were accepted to Papermill Playhouse's prestigious Summer Musical Theater Concertory. They will begin a rigorous five-week program designed to enhance performance skills while skillful, technique, discipline, and professionalism needed to excel in performing art. At the end of the month, the vocals rehearse the New Voices concert, performed annually on the Papermill Playoff stage, taking part in the conservatories and walk opportunities, providing experience and exposure that simply can't be obtained anywhere else. Participation is a great honor, a chance for students to demonstrate their talent on a grand scale. We continue to follow the XMS News from the Elizabeth Public Schools and Elizabeth Board of Education on our website, www.dpsnj.org. The president concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. To record everyone, we're going to remember Jonathan Nosa.
Grab the cabinet number five authorization report. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ferrer, second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? CNN local.
Batlas, Castillo, Inosa, yes. Gonzalez, yes. Nazca, yes. Padilla, yes. Ferrer, yes. Montero, yes. Tab six, finance and accounting report. Move the report, second.
Moved by Commissioner Ferrer, second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? CNN local.
Batlas, Castillo, Gonzalez, yes. Inosa, yes. Nazca, yes. Padilla, yes. Ferrer, yes. Montero, second. Six A, finance and accounting report, transfer of funds.
Third report, second. Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, second by Commissioner Ferrer. Any questions or comments? CNN local.
Batlas, Castillo, Inosa, yes. Gonzalez, yes. Nazca, yes. Padilla, yes. Ferrer, yes. Montero, second. Tab seven, award contracts. Third report, second.
Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, second by Commissioner Ferrer. Any questions or comments? CNN local.
Batlas, Castillo, Inosa, yes. Gonzalez, yes. Nazca, yes. Padilla, yes. Ferrer, yes. Montero, yes. Seven A, supplemental award contracts.
Move the report, second. Commissioner, any questions for Ferrer, second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? CNN local.
Batlas, Castillo, Inosa, yes. Gonzalez, yes. Nazca, yes. Padilla, yes. Ferrer, yes. Montero, yes. Eight, miscellaneous communications, there are nine, please list.
Move the report. Moved by Commissioner Ferrer, second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? CNN local.
Batlas, Castillo, Inosa, yes. Gonzalez, yes. Nazca, yes. Padilla, yes. Ferrer, yes. Montero, yes. Some resolutions.
Mr. Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Are you still up here, Brian?
Tab nine, tab.
Is up here.
Nine, please list, yes. Yes.
Right. State, I'm going to extend.
I'm sorry.
Sir?
I didn't hear what you said.
Now, I can change that to a extension.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, would you take us through the resolution for clauses of awareness?
For a reservation resolution, want to have some awareness. Whereas autism has a personal regardless of its religion, socioeconomic status, or geography, likewise, incidents of autism in the United States is one in one fifty and one in every whole voice, whereas autism is compared with an air of child's development, and whereas autism is recognized as a lifestyle condition below curriculum, and whereas the aim for autism awareness are to extend the general power of our mental price to autism, stress in forms of early diagnosis, early intervention, and to celebrate the deep thousands and value of individual development in autism. Now, therefore, we resolve that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education, if the rest of the country recognizes April as, or to set awareness as having a nature of autism and problem resolution.
Move by Commissioner Speaker, second by Commissioner Pereira, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
May I ask Commissioner Anthony Balthus to give the resolution on donate life form?
Donate life form. Whereas every human life as matters now, we must reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness about the importance of organ and tissue donation. We also wish to express our appreciation to those who have donated organs, tissues, and bone matter. And whereas nationally, over one hundred and six thousand Americans currently have non-leaving trust for an organ transplant, a thousand more need life-enhancing tissue transplants. Locally, over four thousand five hundred New Jersey residents are waiting for a life-saving, life-saving organ or a life-enhancing tissue transplant. And whereas, with the enactment of the HERO Act on July two thousand eight, New Jersey has become the first state in the union to pass legislation, legislation in support for organ and tissue donation education. Now, therefore, we resolve that each high school in the Elizabeth Public School District is required to ensure that information about organ and tissue donation is included in the core curriculum content standards for comprehensive health and physical education for grades nineteen and twelve. Be it further resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education will call upon our healthcare professionals, volunteers, educators, government agencies, faith-based and community groups, and private organizations to assist in increasing the number of New Jersey residents registered to become organ and tissue donors. And be it further resolved that the Elizabeth Public Schools will call upon the greater community at large to encourage residents to register with the state's donor registry, save as the organ and tissue donation on their driver's license, and share their decisions with family and friends. By taking new steps since its onset of Elizabeth to save lives, we are committed to strengthening organ and tissue donation programs and to increase the number of organs available for transplantations in order to save lives. The kindness and generosity of donors reflect the passionate spirit of our state. And be it resolved that April, April two thousand thirteen, Elizabeth Public Schools will celebrate donate life form by developing corporate activities in support of organ and tissue donation registration campaign. I move the resolution.
Move by Commissioner Palos, Secretary Commissioner Gonzalez, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Can I ask our Commissioner Denosa to read the resolution to National Library?
My pleasure, Mr. President. Board of Education Resolution, National Library. Whereas our school library media centers serve a vital role in learning and academic achievement within a school, and whereas our students and teachers and staff benefit from the wide variety of materials available in our media centers, materials that promote communication and sharing of ideas so necessary in a vibrant democratic society. And whereas our school library media specialists do an outstanding job in selecting, assembling, and sharing our organized collections of information with each school community, and whereas today's school library media specialists also play an integral role in introducing students and staff to the tremendous amounts of information available online and through district's state-of-the-art technology, and whereas our school library media centers are as fundamental to our country as our principles of freedom, equality, and individual rights. Now, therefore, we resolve that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth of two thousand thirteen, National Library Week. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education also recognize National Library Workers' Day on April tenth as part of National Library Week to thank the district's school media specialists for all that they do to support our students' academic growth and development into eager and enthusiastic careers. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and library media specialists to encourage special activities in our district's schools during the month of April to promote reading and use of our outstanding school library media centers. I move the resolution.
Move by Commissioner Denosa, Secretary, Mr. Balthus, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus. Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Tennessee, requisition for taxes. Move the resolution, second.
Move by Commissioner Pereira, Secretary Commissioner Gonzalez, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
N D, resolution, Elizabeth Public Schools Excellence Parade. Move the resolution, second.
Move by Commissioner Gonzalez, Secretary Commissioner Denosa, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
I'm sorry. Is the parade going to be eleven AM or two PM? I'm sorry. Is the parade going to be eleven AM or two PM?
I think it changes. It's one thing, it's the other.
What, what are we discussing, Mr. Kennedy?
Eleven AM is the meeting when we're going to start gathering to start the parade.
So we start to gather?
Yes.
At the beginning?
Yes.
You know what time the parade starts?
It's about that.
It's about two?
About two o'clock.
Yes, it takes.
Taking.
Okay. Any other question?
Um, resolution, resolution ten E is the Code of Ethics, a reconfirmation by the board member. I need to read the Code of Ethics before we pass, pass the resolution. Code of Ethics, the members of the Board of Education recognize that they hold authority not as individuals but as members of the Board. In order to make a clear public statement of its philosophy and service to the students of the district, the Board does list the Code of Ethics. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes should be brought about in lieu of legal and ethical decisions. B, I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children who seek to develop and maintain public schools, which meet individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C, I will comply with my Board's actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Now, I help to frame policy plans only after the Board has consulted those who would be affected by them. D, I will bear out my responsibilities not to diminish the schools but together with fellow board members to see that they are well run. E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any fight of action which may compromise the Board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment in special interest of partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools, but in all matters I will provide accurate information and concert provide fellow board members, interpreters of staff, aspirations of the community for its schools. H, I will vote to appoint best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief school administrator. I will support and protect school personnel in keeping the performance of their duties. J, I will prefer all complaints to the chief school administrator who will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. The Board shall see that all members of the Board receive training and understanding that carried through this Code of Ethics, and shall discuss a manual in the regular schedule of all meetings. Each member shall sign a documentation that he she has received a copy and has read in this document. Now, if I may vote a motion to accept the Code of Ethics. Motion to accept the Code of Ethics, second. Move by Commissioner Pereira, Secretary Commissioner Gonzalez, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal. Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
We have a second reading of the, of the revised policies, regulations, and exhibits. Fourteen ten, local units policy, fifty-one four, one point four, child abuse and midlife policy, five one four, one point four R, child abuse and midlife regulation, five one four, one point four X, child abuse and midlife exhibit, five one four, five point five, photographs of students policy, five one four, five point one one, questioning and apprehensive pension policy, five one four, five point one one R, questioning and apprehensive regulation, six thousand point two, accountability and assessment policy, and nine one one five, holds of office exhibit, and a resolution for adoption. Move the resolution, second.
Move by Commissioner Pereira, Secretary, Secretary Commissioner Gonzalez, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
N G, resolution, recognition of Traveling Guitar Foundation.
Okay, I have, uh, Mr. Fernando Masca who presented this resolution, who presented the award, gave the motion to the resolution.
Glad to, Mr. President. Board of Education Resolution. Whereas David Marks, a former Elizabeth Public School student, a renowned musician-songwriter founded the Traveling Guitar Foundation, will ensure that despite monetary obstacles, students would have access to art programs. And whereas the Traveling Guitar Foundation is a nonprofit organization, will provide musical equipment, support for school systems, camps across the United States, to help music education programs. And whereas the Traveling Guitar Foundation's mission is to foster creativity and intellectual growth through our programs, and to ensure that elementary and high school students have access to high-quality musical instruments and comprehensive instruction throughout their formative years. And whereas the Traveling Guitar Foundation generously donated five sector guitars, amps, and other musical equipment to Rutherford Marshall Number Eighteen, and provided a special musical performance in Rorschach which included R and B pop artist Caesar the Artist and blues rock guitarist Kristen Dean. Whereas the foundation, through its passionate efforts, works to ensure that the equipment donated is used for strengthening of students' educational, artistic, and social development by providing guidance and curriculum. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education officially recognizes, officially recognizes the Traveling Guitar Foundation for its support of the Elizabeth Public Schools' music education programs. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread to the official Board of Education, and a copy be presented to representatives of the Traveling Guitar Foundation. I so move this resolution.
Move by Commissioner Masca, second by Commissioner Balthus, any questions, comments? See you none, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
We have the first reading of our revised five oh nine three two six minutes. The revised policy is available for inspection in the office of the school business administrator or secretary. And that concludes the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The President requests the motion to let the private session consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of personnel, specifically LHS, MA, MA, MK, JH, MD, DJ, IM, RS, DS, and KH. Harassment, intimidation, and mole results, and worse, compensation payments, specifically LHS, AG, MH, and LD. The Board will reconvene if public to take formal action. Thank you.
Motion to go private, second.
Motion by Commissioner Masca, second by Commissioner Palos, vocal.
Balthus.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Masca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.